The City Council Meeting is called to order.
Roll call for the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, January 17, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the City Council Meeting of January 3, 2018, and bills for payment on January 12 to 19, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Okay, are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Last time, are there any repository sales? Okay, that takes us to citizens to be heard.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I have a couple of things I want to take up, one of which is the port plan. And you just had a rather hectic, heminata conversation with the port director, and I understand you have an interest in having a study session, which I hope will be publicized so that the public can attend. My concerns are that they are kind of trying to use Erie Refocus to reframe what they want to do down there. I don't, I think we have an iconic bayfront. The iconic bayfront is a place that is quiet, relatively quiet, where you can see, and the most iconic thing that happens on the bayfront is the fishermen. And anything, I think what their plan of putting in a Ferris wheel, which will add to the light pollution in our community, and which there are already too many Ferris wheels as iconic around the world, and they want to, and they want to put in lots of retail, lots of restaurants, which could go anywhere in this community. But what it would do is shut in the view, where you won't be able to see across from one side to the other as you now can, it will, it will Coney Islandize the bayfront. It will cheapen it. So I really urge you to use whatever influence you have on the port to realize that Erie, overdeveloping is not core strengthening. It's not really consistent with Erie Refocus. So please have a study session, please be deliberate, and please include the public as, as, as an audience. Secondly, I, I would like to say that even though we have had large snows, every year, large snow, medium snow, there is a failure of commercial entities in this city to clear sidewalks. Residents, that's another issue, but businesses routinely plow their driveways and their parking lots and leave huge berms across the sidewalk. A good example, which I've sent you all copies, is Oakwood Plaza on West 26th Street in Haybarger. And there's an enormous berm. It's going to take months to melt out. That's the berm, but there's places like, until very recently, the Erie Cemetery, but tonight, the reservoir, many commercial properties that they just don't clear their sidewalk. If the city would get down every year, not just this year, because it's chronic, and require that clearing, the equipment to do it would be there. If there's enough business, the equipment will be in the town. I had businesses tell me, well, Gerlox said they can't get here. Gerlox, or maybe a new business, maybe a minority person would, would start developing a business if the city would get serious about enforcing pedestrian access in this city during the snowstorms. These are the poorest people, these are the disabled people, these are the children, these are the elderly who deserve a right to walk freely in this city. Thirdly, in that regard, I am disappointed that Erie Insurance still has noncompliant with ADA signage of their closures. A sign that says sidewalk closed, cross here, is not ADA compliant for somebody who is blind or visually impaired. That's what's going on there. There are four people who are blind or visually impaired, who are independent travelers who live in Schmidt Towers. They should, they should have the ability to travel freely. I, I have, I have been communicating with the traffic engineer and, and the ADA coordinator, and I have seen the plans of, of the contractor, but they do not include an audible signage or signage that is detectable by a person who is blind and visually impaired and placed in such a place that a person can make an intelligent decision where and how to alter their route. A city that cares, and if we take good care of our, our blind and visually impaired pedestrians, other people who have also complained to me that they have trouble getting into negotiating some of the construction sites will also be able to travel freely. I, I hope that the city can do that. I don't know if I have much time left, but I will also say that this is no time to rush into a decision about the McBride viaduct after spreading misinformation that it would cost 250 a household when there is already almost half of the required amount available. Thank you.
Christopher Ross, Kent, 2650 Glenrooke Park Avenue, apartment number nine. There's been problems with that traffic signal up there at 26 and State. They, they need a left turn, turn signal in that, that, that traffic light up there because when you're in the crosswalk, people ain't paying attention, and they're, they're, they're distracting people going at that intersection. And additionally, the EMA, they're having hard time turning up there because of all the traffic that got going up there.
Madam President, excuse me, could you please repeat that, sir? Could, I'm sorry, we didn't, on...
26 and State, up by Veteran Stadium.
Yes.
They, they, they need that, that turn signal up at that, that intersection because when you're in the crosswalk, people, people ain't paying attention, and they're, they're turning, and they're almost striking people sitting in the crosswalks.
Turning onto 26th Street or turning onto State?
On State and 26.
Like a green arrow is what you're thinking.
Okay. Yeah, that's been a long, I've been down here several times regarding that, and I didn't hear anything about that. Okay.
Thank you.
Jason, Jason Burnold, 4131 McCollum Avenue, 16510. Thank you and for allowing me to speak my voice, and it gives me great honor to serve the fat, my community, the LGBT community. And it will give me great honor to serve the city in any capacity that you feel my skillset, my passion, and my talents, my ability to work selflessly to move the LGBT community forward. I, I know I have apologized for my behavior in the past, and I know that you may have an impression of me, but I hope we can work together for the greater good, and I apologize again. But the buck stops here. Let's not, let's take off our rose colored glasses for a second, because if the national media has painted Erie, Pennsylvania, one of the worst cities for the, for the African-American community, I have proof right here that Erie is the worst city for the LGBT community here. The Human Rights Campaign just released their state equality index, and we are in the lowest among the 50 states. On this chart, it says nondiscrimination laws and everything that deals with laws, quality of life, business, and any aspect that deals with the community. On this second sheet is 2017's. We are 37 out of 100. Mayor Schenber, please stop those commercials for the human county, for Erie County Human Relations Commission. You're, we are giving a false narrative to the LGBT community. Yes, we can file a complaint, and we can file with the county, but there are no laws, nothing, on the books from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and within the city of Erie to say that I can move into an apartment, and yet the commercial says, oh, because you're gay. You can't. Here, right here, in black and white, one color, is the truth, that commercial is a false narrative to the LGBT community. There are 400,000 LGBT citizens in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and I know Erie has about 5,000. But I know you've been worried about me and my mental state. Well, I've been going to therapy, I've been doing everything correct for myself and my journey, but here are some numbers that I think that are alarming. We're talking about marijuana possession, and you're going to say yes to it? Here's something that you should think and listen. An Adam for Adam is a social media website, just like Grindr. There are 362 profiles of gay men in Erie, or gay or bisexual men, 70 of which are engaged in a narcotic activity. So basically, that is 20% of the LGBT community engaged in this opiate epidemic crisis. Where is Mike Mailer of Northwest Pride Alliance? Where is Rich McCarley and Will Kohler of Greater Erie Alliance for Quality about this opiate epidemic or this equality index that I've been talking to you for the past several months? I know the news media does not talk about the LGBT community the way I do, but here, I have here, and I'd like to present this packet to the solicitor, to the mayor, to the new councilwomen's that are present, and I know I did this last, last month, but I have a packet of my record with the LGBT community. My packet, in this packet, there is my life coming out of the closet for the past 20 years. I would love to serve with you, Mayor Schenber, with the City Council, to help the LGBT community, to change the laws, to transform Erie, because the Chamber of Congress website has this little link for the LGBT community, painting it in rosy color, like, yay, we're LGBT friendly, but we're not. We are not. These laws right here tell us different. This is the cold, hard facts we need to do. And one thing is, I'd like to introduce gay conversion therapy ban. Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Allentown, and now the city of Redding, the fifth largest city in the Commonwealth, wears Erie. We need to wake up to help the minority communities, not just the African-American community, but the LGBT community, because it's time. Time's up. Sorry I'm saying this, but it's time's up. We need to do this together.
Good evening, Councilman, Madam Chairman, Mayor Schenber, welcome. Just have three issues, I'll try to be brief this evening. First of all, regarding the McBride viaduct. The city has the priority position and the operating position on that bridge, and can determine what it would like to do. The city also has a new planner. It would be nice to know what the new planner has in mind, or would have in mind, with the bridge. Also, this is an environmental justice issue, and I am for, and you've heard me say before, a public meeting to air the new ideas regarding the bridge, the last public meeting, maybe four years ago or more. It's time to update, to get a new reading, and to hear the community on this issue. Second of all, I speak for and in favor of community benefit agreements. We need the community to feel the prosperity and the opportunity that development brings in this community. CBAs are a tool, they're a leverage, to give hope to our citizens. And third of all, regarding the decriminalization of marijuana. Approval gives hope to young folks who made a mistake, to those families that struggle to get ahead. It gives wind to the hope of other communities in the area who need an example of how to lead, to mix justice with compassion. Your community says thank you for your approval this evening. Thank you for standing up for justice. I would encourage all citizens to stand up for what is right. It was Martin Luther King Jr. that said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you.
A little short. My name is James Miller, but everybody calls me by my middle name, Sam. I live at 233 Bear Drive, Erie, 16505. I was at the meeting at the Jefferson last night, the town hall meeting about the viaduct. I just want to say, I heard so many good reasons for preserving that, that bridge, and for putting some money into making it live a little longer. And I would ask that the city consider delaying the destruction of the bridge until a public hearing can be had, because last night, I heard so many, so many good reasons for saving that viaduct. Thank you.
My name is Doris Apola, 8640 East Lake Road, Erie, 16511. I was at the Jefferson session last night also, and I want to thank those council members who were there. I'm sorry to say that many of you were not, including the mayor. I think the public has to be heard. This is a democratic issue. This is an economic justice issue. It's an environmental issue. It's not just the safety of walking. We were demonstrating at the East Avenue Bridge a couple of months ago. I can't tell you what the fumes are like. They're tremendous. You may say, well, aren't they like that on the McBride Bridge? No, they are not. There's quite a difference. I think that you have to act in behalf of people and citizens. You can't just show the usual patronage. And these people need this bridge, and it can be a real focal point for Erie, not just for the safety of the children, but it can go beyond that if you have some vision for that bridge. It can really be something to attract tourists, to stimulate business, but I hope that you will have a public hearing. Thank you.
My name is Harry Beery. I live at 242 East 32nd Street, 16504. My main complaint tonight is not, complaint is so much to ask a question. I know that there are laws about driving a car when drunk or drugged, but how is this going to apply to this allowing the people to smoke marijuana? Will a person be allowed to drive while he's under the influence of the marijuana? I have had an occasion where I used to live around the corner where a man who was obviously stoned run a stop sign in front of me at least 10 times. And it wasn't drunk, he was dead stoned. And I don't think that's a good idea toward all people to drive if they're going to be smoking this pot. I do want you to know that I have been for the decriminalization of marijuana since way back in the 50s. I never thought it should have been done the way it was. And now I will not make one more comment about the McBride viaduct. From what I saw last night, what the lady said, what Sam said, I agree with them. It should be preserved, and it appears to be something like politics and patronage that wants to destroy it, and nobody seems to be trying to defend it. And I believe it should be defended because we do need at least one place where people won't be walking along the high speed highway, and like they said, one person with clock, clock at 104 mile per hour there. I've seen people doing that much on 12th Street, and I think the McBride viaduct is a safer alternative. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sister Michelle Shrek. I'm from the House of Mercy, 2005 Woodlawn Avenue. I spoke, I think it was in November, about the McBride viaduct, and I think that Mayor Schenber's position is public now, and while I disagree with it, I understand that the City Council can, if there are four people at least that would vote to have a public hearing, that, that would allow that. I don't understand what the, the, the reason for not at least having a hearing. My understanding is that a hearing is different than the procedures of other meetings that have been had, and it seems like there is new information, and just so people can have their voice, I, I would urge the City Council to make a resolution and to have at least four or five of you vote for having a public hearing. Thank you.
My name is Jafar Verdi. I'm also at the House of Mercy. I live at 1934 Langone Avenue, and I also think that you guys shouldn't tear down the McBride viaduct because it gives many students an easy and safe way to get home away from the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Jackson, and I live at 1914 June Street. And first of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Liz.
Excuse me, Ms. Mary, would you mind putting the microphone down? I can't hear you. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Sonia, Ms. Liz, Ms. Kathy, for being at our meeting up last night about the bridge, and I'm hoping that Mayor Schenber, the next time we have our meeting, I hope you will show up, and you will be there to hear what the citizens have to say, because most of the people that's wanting to tear that bridge down, including you, do not even live in that area. So I'm hoping you will come out, and you will listen to what the citizens have to say, because I think it's very vital for you to know what the citizen wants to, what the citizen need. And we invite you to come to our next meeting. And, you know, the bridge is very important, not only, you know, for the people in that area, there's a, even businesses really want that bridge saved and everything. And I ask you to take it under consideration. Don't listen to what other people are saying. Make your judgment on what you see and what you hear the citizens are saying. Thank you.
Hi, guys, my name's Scotty. Nice to see you guys again. Hope everybody's doing well. Joe, I'd like to have seen you there last night as well, I got to be honest. You know, it was a really interesting meeting. I got to hear a lot of different perspectives that I didn't really, you know, know about. And I really wish you'd have been there. Hope you can make to the next one. Tonight, I, I want, you know, when we set the Pledge of Allegiance, we ended it with, with liberty and justice for all. We have the Liberty Bell, we've got the Statue of Liberty, we've got Liberty Street, but we never concentrate on what liberty means. The definition of liberty is the state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions by authority on your way of life, your actions, and your political beliefs. Criminalizing me for using cannabis, a substance that is less harmful, less addictive, and less intoxicating than beer, is an oppressive restriction upon me. I moved here six years ago, and I became an instant criminal, instantly. I moved from a state where I was legally allowed to use medical cannabis and have been doing it for years, and I became an instant criminal to come here and be with my partner. In those years, I've started two businesses. I've been nothing but an exemplary citizen, and there are thousands of people just like me. They can't stand up. They can't say, hey, I use cannabis and I'm a good person, because they've got kids, they've got jobs that could fire them for doing that. Now, how can we live in a society and say that we're about liberty and fire somebody or threaten their jobs for standing up for something that is inherently wrong? That is inherently wrong. So I'd like to say for sure, let's decriminalize cannabis, and let's send the loudest message that we can to Harrisburg to legalize and regulate this product like they're doing all across the United States. It creates jobs, it lowers crimes, and it lowers the opiate use. And I can tell you why. If you guys want to know about that, come talk to me personally, and I will talk to you as to why that's happening all across the United States. I would love to have that dialogue. On a couple of other things, on the viaduct issues, regardless of whether we tear that bridge down, those issues that the citizens have brought up are important, they're valid, and they must be addressed for the east side and the lower east side. If this entire city wishes to grow, then wishes to become the city that it can become. So those issues must be addressed. As far as the gay stuff, brother, I don't know about your life here in Erie. I've been treated great, all right? And, you know, some of the things that you brought up may very well be an issue, and I'm not going to discount those, but I, as a whole, I got to say, as a gay man, I've been treated pretty darn okay in that, in that regard. There are some major issues with drugs within the gay community, especially the opiates and the harder drugs. Absolutely, they must be dealt with, but they've got to be dealt with in a harm reduction strategy, just like we did with HIV/AIDS in the 80s. And there's numbers of, a number of strategies out there that we can look into, but we can't stick our heads in the sand and continue on the same path that we have in the past. Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Hi, Lisa Austin, 1262 West 9th Street. I'm happy to have a chance to speak to all of you, City Council, and it's very good to see you here tonight as well, Mayor. I wanted to comment that we are very thankful of the attendance of yourself last night, President, Council President Sonia Arrington, Councilwoman Liz, Liz Allen, and of course, Councilwoman Kathy Shaw. I know that the lack of attendance by the other members of council is not necessarily indicative of any disinterest. I know, for instance, that Councilman Murzky was busy with a two-year-old last night. So I, I believe that there are many, many demands on your time. So I would ask that those of you who are not able to attend, if you would, take the time to go to the Facebook page and take a look at it. And it's, it's posted there, so you could take it, you could definitely see it. I'll hand you one of these in a minute, so you can, at some point, take a look and see. The visitor that we had from New York was a really interesting man, and he also challenged us when we were talking about the cost of the bridge. And, and one of the things that came to light is that the $3 million that Adam Trot had identified as necessary to make the repairs is actually more than is needed to do the absolute minimum. In other words, to just look at the minimal essential repairs to make it safe for people to walk and bike is actually lower than that. It's 1.7 million. How does that drop that much? It drops in the same, this way. The, the, what he, there, he's talking about doing is stabilizing the deck and, and leaving the superstructure, the steel bones are already completely stable. the steel bones are already completely stable. So all that's really necessary is to clean those storm drains, to eliminate further damage, and to seal the deck. So that was a, it was a really kind of a startling thing to start thinking about it where you're not necessarily going to make it look beautiful again. In other words, the piers can look sort of run down. I sort of liken it to the idea of, you know, you get a junker car in high school, and somebody hits the side of it, and, you know, you fix the door so you can open it, but you don't really get it all beautifully repainted. So that's sort of the mindset of that 1.7. It would allow us to keep it functioning, but it wouldn't be the most beautiful thing. So that's something really taking, worth taking a look at. And these, this information would be able to be clarified in a public hearing. It would allow the data that supports an assertion like this to be examined in a public way. The other big issue beyond stabilizing the bridge, of course, is the, what is the number to maintain it? And one of the things that I found fascinating is that once the bridge is stabilized, i.e. the potholes are filled, they're not necessarily going to reappear, because those potholes have to do with traffic running across it, which we're not going to have, little bicycles or something, and it also has to do with the water backing up. Once the water drains are cleaned, cleared, you're not going to have that continuing problem. So the maintenance costs are actually going to be relatively low, and, you know, somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000, but of course, if there's a public hearing, we would have to have a more fixed number to that. Now, the other thing that was fascinating last night, and we've been talking a lot about, is where does the money come from? And as, as the mayor has acknowledged, there's a portion of money that does come directly from PennDOT, not the entire amount, but somewhere between 1.2 and 1.7, depending. We've heard different numbers. Then the second portion of the money could come, and it would need to be applied for, from the MPO. Again, there would be a balance of, needed of $300,000 to 1.8 million, quite a big range there. But the thing that's fascinating is the money that's coming, going to be generated through this new fund at the county, is going to actually create $15 million over the next 10 years. And again, it's a competitive grant process that, through the administration, would have to be applied for. Then the third big category builds on one of the really exciting things that the mayor has brought to the table, which is grant writing, which hasn't been done a lot of here. And there are many state, federal, and private grants, not only for infrastructure, but for public health along the lines of the Blue Zones, and placemaking is another big category, which we would definitely be able to utilize in that site. So I think what's happened is that, and I believe that, that the information that has been gathered so far and shared hasn't been clear enough to make any decision other than to demolish it. And what a public hearing would do would allow a vetting of this other information. So I share the request to please have a public hearing, and I would like you to just take a look at the summary of what I've just shared with you, and also the website, if you would take a look at it, and the Facebook page. Thank you for your time tonight.
Good evening. My name is Alan Green. I reside at 636 East 10th Street. I'd like you to support the campus possession decriminalization procedure. Making the lead illegal has caused people to lose jobs. It does not promote public safety or public relations, and it can also lead to loss of voting rights in some circumstances. And the Port Authority has many hotels that do not generate enough revenue already. We do not need more development on the Bayfront. We need to preserve the beauty of the Bayfront. And the viaduct was built in memory of a child that died walking across the Bayfront Connector. The Bayfront's not walkable in winter time. It gets piled high with snow, and people will be forced to walk in the streets, and we need to quit hiring out-of-town contractors and hire more local. Thanks.
John Schubert, I live at 2413 East Avenue. I think some of you know I was on the committee about saving the bridge, either rebuilding it or a brand-new bridge from day one, never missed a meeting. Some of you were at the meetings, and some of you weren't. And quite frankly, last night, I believe was ladies' night, apparently, because I must have read something wrong, because there was no gentleman there. And being on that committee for probably four years, I learned a lot, but last night, I even learned a lot more. The time, the damage in that, that's on that bridge is not anywhere near of what PennDOT and what our city engineer, who led a lot of you folks in the signing an agreement, which I think some of you regret, at least that's what you told me verbally. But the point of it is, last night, Mayor, you were saying when you were running that you wanted to come to every meeting. Well, last night, quite frankly, it was a very informative meeting. It was a very nice crowd. Every speaker spoke very well. And if any of yous were there, you would have learned a little bit more about that bridge. There's a lot of superficial damage. I personally had talked with some of the guys that worked on the streets. They were never informed even to clean those drains out. And that section of the bridge, or that part of the city, that is so important to the east side. I mentioned, for example, at the meetings, it was Chief Paul. I said to him, I says, "Engine number eight could run over there in a matter of a minute to save a life." His only reply was, "Well, we're within the federal guidelines." I said, "How would you like to explain that to a father or a son that lost either a child or a parent, because you were within the federal guidelines, and you could have got there sooner?" We had policemen here back a few years ago that were shot and killed, right there on East Avenue. They could have been over. If they, the way they have to go now, they couldn't even get up to help save them. And that, just talking, they're talking about making it into walking. I personally would still like to see it as traffic. The Bayfront, when it was put in, it was put in there primarily for shipping trucks and things of that nature, to take traffic off of the local area, and it really hasn't done that. People are afraid to get on that Bayfront, because quite frankly, when they're driving on it, people are running 70. They had one clocked, was brought up to meeting last night, I know this for a fact, at 104 miles an hour. I had a neighbor that his sister lived right there on 11th and East Avenue. He was afraid to go on that bridge. Fellow was in his 70s, my age, you know, but quite frankly, I don't even like to go on the bridge. The businesses now down there on East Avenue, a lot of them have gone. Carpet Town, 100 and some years, gone. No business. So they sold out. The point of it is, you've been listening, unfortunately, Mayor, to Pettit, you've been listening to PennDOT, you've been listening to the city engineer, and quite frankly, the city engineer, for example, he at times thought he was the mayor at these meetings that we had. And a lot of these things that are going on are not the way they told you. But like I said, this is so vital, and you yourself said, "Look, I want to get together with the people on that," and quite frankly, it's really needed, that bridge. The only thing I can tell you is, like I said, I drove it, and even the kids walking, two, it's approximately 2,000 feet that the kids would have to walk on that Bayfront. That Bayfront, then it's still an extra 700 feet that they would have to be walking in that. But like I said, when Franklin Avenue Bridge goes down, or any of the others, if they're doing work on that Bayfront Bridge, the only other place that you got is Water Street. Ash Street a lot of times is closed because of problems with the railroad and that, and then we go back to Parade Street. We could have had a brand-new bridge there for approximately $500,000 to $750,000. So I wish that you would reconsider and also have a public meeting with the people. One last thing, I know I'm over time, but I do want to mention this. As far as you folks going into the marijuana, I don't know a lot of people that in the marijuana, when they get their high, the next step is to go into something a little bit more and a little bit more. And we're fighting, you know, opium, we're fighting a lot of drug situations here in town. I've had them in my neighborhood for over three years, still have problems. But what I'm saying is caution you, because a little bit here, and then you need another high, et cetera. Thank you. Good night.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? No, sir, you already spoke, it's only one time. Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last time, any more citizens to be heard? Rose, that takes us into the ordinances.
Ordinances for final passage, Council File 15612, official ordinance number 3, 2018. An ordinance amending Part 7 of the City of Erie General Offenses Code by adding an Article 714, Marijuana Possession Procedure, adding Section 714.01 definitions, adding Section 714.02, possession or smoking of a small amount of marijuana, possession of drug paraphernalia, adding Article 714.03 enforcement, and adding Article 714.99 penalties.
Madam President. Yeah. Ms. Rose.
I'm sorry, that got out of order.
Yeah, the first one is 15611.
Thank you. My mistake. You let me read that whole thing.
Why, just, I was. Before I opened my mouth, I said, "Am I right or..."
Okay. Sorry about that. Council File 15611, ordinance number 2, 2018, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the Codified Ordinance of Erie, Pennsylvania. Sponsored by Mrs. Arrington and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15611, and now known as official file ordinance number 2, 2018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen.
I just want to say, I'm voting yes, but I want you to know that by doing, by actually saying yes, I am in violation of council rules, which I just found out, that at the last meeting, we approved these rules, that you aren't supposed to say yes or no, you're supposed to assent. So I... All right. But if you say yes, I'm violating the rules. So I'm violating the rules. Just so people know, what I would like is, at the beginning of the meeting, for people who don't know this, and people who are watching on TV, maybe somebody could say, if you don't say anything that you're voting yes, I think that would be a service to the public. I don't want to be violating the rules anymore, because I'm already going to be in trouble here. So this is my last yes, but I would like people to know that it's an actual rule that you can't say yes. So yes.
Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murfsky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Yes.
Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass official file ordinance number 2, 2018, finally by A7, nay zero. Council File 15612, official ordinance number 3, 2018, an ordinance amending Part 7 of the City of Erie General Offenses Code by adding Article 714, Marijuana Possession Procedure, adding Section 714.01 definitions, adding Section 714.02, possession or smoking of a small amount of marijuana, possession of drug paraphernalia, adding Article 714.03 enforcement, and adding Article 714.99 penalties.
Madam President.
Yes.
As the maker of the motion, I just wanted to speak to it. I heard some citizens to be heard. I want people to understand that decriminalization doesn't mean it's a free-for-all. What it means is it's become a civil offense versus a criminal offense, and so what ends up happening is, you, it's still a crime, but you are getting a fine instead of getting a misdemeanor on your record. What happens with those misdemeanors oftentimes is that it is a barrier to employment, it's a barrier to military service, and so something that you've done at 16, 17, 18, 19, 20 affects you for your whole life. And we're, we're basically sentencing people to a lifetime of limited opportunities, the way we do it now. And so we're trying to change it to let people pay their debt to society for a small infraction and move on with their lives. This ordinance also has in it, to the man who said, "Well, what if you're driving while you're high?" It also includes in there, if you're caught doing something else that is criminal, you will be upcharged with the misdemeanor. That's in the ordinance. And so this is, the purpose of this is for otherwise law-abiding citizens to not carry a punishment for the rest of their lives, like a scarlet letter that you smoked marijuana. And for the record, I don't smoke marijuana. Everyone thinks I'm this big weed smoker now, but for the record, it's, it's common sense legislation to help people move on with their lives and live their lives. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And that's all I have to say, Madam President.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Sponsored by Mr. Murfsky, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15612, and now known as official file ordinance number 3, 2018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murfsky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass official file ordinance number 3, 2018, finally by A7, nay zero. Council File Number 15613, official ordinance number 4, 2018, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 26, 1958, the traffic code of the City of Erie by the installation of a stop sign at one intersection at Norman Way and Elliott Road. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15613, and now known as official file ordinance number 4, 2018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murfsky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass official file ordinance number 4, 2018, finally by A7, nay zero. Council File 15614, official ordinance number 5, 2018, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Sisters of Mercy for the purchase of police equipment, fire prevention supplies or equipment, and winter maintenance equipment. By Mrs. Arrington and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15614, and now known as official file ordinance number 5, 2018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murfsky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass official file ordinance number 5, 2018, finally by A7, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File 15615, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $339,881.44 to be received as a transfer from Bayfront Urban Development Action Grant to the City of Erie Business Development Fund for purposes of job creation, investment, and economic development in the City of Erie.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just wanted to speak to this briefly. Um, I just wanted to speak to this briefly. Chris Groner from the Economic Development Office, and I have been working on this for about two years now, and I want to thank Mayor Schimber for taking action on this. The Bayfront Urban Development Action Grant was a grant from the 1990s, and this money was just sitting in a pot, and we were only allowed to use it for specific things, and it was very limited, it's state money. And Mr. Groner petitioned the state to put this in, to transfer it, to the fund that this council, our last year's council, created, and that was our city economic development fund to loan out money to small businesses. So, this $339,881.44 is going into our city economic development fund, and what it will be used for is entrepreneurs and small business owners to receive up to $5,000 in mini grants and loans. And this is the city's way of encouraging that entrepreneurial mindset and helping people get a start on their small business. So, I'm really excited about this first reading. Thank you.
Sponsored by Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kowalski, the Council File Ordinance 15615, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Schaff, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murzky, I mean, Ms. Allen, excuse me, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 151615 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Second.
Do we have any separations?
I have two separations. The first one is number two, a resolution sponsored by Councilman James Winarsky, appointing Mr. Shawn Walsh of 3610 Pacific Avenue to the Erie Sewer Authority for a term of five years. And do I get to talk about this now, or do I just separate?
Wait.
Okay. The other separation is number seven, a resolution authorizing and directing, directing the proper city officials to sell an out-of-service ultra-fold friction feed folding machine to Roseanne Barker. Do I read the whole thing, or does, do people just look at? Anyhow, it's for sale for, it's be, was offered for $200, and we're going to have to amend that, so those two.
We have to vote to waive the rules before you go on.
Madam President, I'd like to also, number, number three under new business, separate, and number five under contracts.
Discussion?
First, we got to...
We got to vote on waiving the rules.
Waive the rules.
Oh, okay.
I've lost my agenda, it might be with those ordinances. Is that the contract for the solicitor?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I got one for you, too.
Okay, I'll take them all. All right.
Here's yours, if you had notes.
Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. Sponsored by Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Kowalski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that Mr. Shawn Walsh of 3610 Pacific Avenue, Erie, is hereby appointed to the Erie Sewer Authority for a term of five years, which will expire 12/31/22. Discussion?
I'm sorry. I made a mistake. How, that separation that Ms. Allen wanted?
Yeah.
Could I agree with her?
Yeah, first, we have a discussion.
Well, you're going to have your discussion.
Okay.
And then, we're going to take the vote, or do whatever is discussed.
Okay. Okay, so I can talk about the Sewer Authority now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I want to tell you why I moved to separate this. I, I have a bunch of different reasons for this, and the first one is that we've had no chance to review any information about the nominee, Shawn Walsh. I ended up calling a friend of mine over the weekend, and I said, "Is Shawn Walsh Joey Walsh's son?" Joey Walsh is the judge, I used to babysit for him, and she said, "Yeah, I think she, I think he is." That's not the way we should be getting information about a nominee for an important authority. But the, that is beside the point, we don't have any information other than his address. But my other questions are that Mr. Walsh, who may be a great nominee, one of our other colleagues Googled and found out that he has, I think, an undergrad and a master's degree, I don't know, something, in science or something. But what's happening with this appointment is a couple of things. There is an incumbent on the water, on the Sewer Authority whose term is not being renewed. I do not think that every incumbent on an authority should be renewed, but certainly that person should have a chance to be considered in a pool of applicants who might be interested in doing this public service. The person who is being, not getting a chance to have a second term on the Sewer Authority is Gary Knatchek, who is a CPA, and he did not know until the Sewer Authority meeting yesterday that he was, had not been nominated for renewal. The chairman of the Sewer Authority said he was shocked that Mr. Knatchek was not being renewed. I have a pragmatic question here. Kathy and I sat in on the budget hearings, it was very gracious of the, of CAS to invite us to be part of that because we were not, had not been sworn in yet, but there was some discussion, and again, this is just discussion, nobody, this has, this is just some general ideas that were thrown out there, but there were questions about the amount of, how much the suburbs are paying under their contracts with the city, I believe, it's, you know, for the flow that goes through, and there was some discussion about, you know, maybe those rates have to be changed. I would think that if we're talking about looking for, you know, some additional revenue sources from this asset, which all of us citizens in the city have paid for, that you might want to have a CPA on the board to, to raise some questions. One of the interesting things that I have been told ever since I questioned the Sewer Authority appointment is kind of basically being told that if I didn't vote for this one, people won't vote for my appointments. You know what? I am not here to have friends or relatives appointed to authorities, I'm here to look for the best candidates. So, if I have an appointment, because it rotates, apparently, it's kind of informal, nobody can really tell you how it rotates among council members, but if somebody says they aren't going to vote for somebody that I would nominate to an authority kind of as payback, well, that's kind of the breaks, I guess, I guess I'll just take my chances. I'm not going to say yes anymore, I'm going to be quiet for that, but when it comes to authority appointments, I am going to make sure that, you know, people know how to apply for these positions, which by the way, are voluntary. So, you know, Mr. Knatchek put a lot of time into examining the finances of the Sewer Authority, and I'm, by the way, he's also, he's not like a friend of mine either, I, I only know him because he ran for school board a couple of years ago. I started attending Sewer Authority meetings, not because I wanted to be the liaison to the Sewer Authority, but when I was running for council, I tried to hit as many authority meetings as possible because I wanted to know how city government works, and I guess it was a fortunate thing that I was then appointed liaison to the Sewer Authority. I also wanted to say, even though, you know, Mr. Knatchek apparently will not be coming back to the Sewer Authority, I hope the Sewer Authority knows that the liaison to the Sewer Authority is me, a person who likes to ask questions, who likes to look at budgets, who likes to know how numbers work. One of the other things we learned when we came in here tonight, we were signing bills, and I, this doesn't have anything to do with liaison, it has to do with which city departments you are the liaison to. So, Kathy's the liaison for Public Works, so she moves to, to pay a certain bill, and then I, I guess I second it, there was all this stuff here to second it, so I added it up, and there was like $91,000 that we just paid for the Sewer Authority. Is that a lot? I don't know, there was some emergency repairs. So, I just want you to know that even though the person that I think should have been reconsidered for another term on the Sewer Authority is, is not going to have that chance, there's still going to be somebody asking questions there. I have one final point about authorities. I think it's like, I, I have served, I added them up, I've served on at least five nonprofit boards, I know that's different than government boards, but usually when you're on a board and you pick board members, you're looking to build capacity. You also want to make sure that you reflect the community. City Council is, because I created a spreadsheet from some information that the city clerk's office gave me, so I think there are 47 different people that city council members would take turns appointing to authorities. So, of those 47 people, there are six women, there are 10 minorities, I think, I think I have that right, but we're kind of double-dipping because there's two women who are minorities. I would not nominate somebody for a position just to say, "Hey, this is a placeholder, we want to make sure that there's a woman on this." But the authorities should reflect the community, and certainly women, as, I guess we've heard a lot since we went to that meeting last night, we made an impression by three women going to a meeting, you know, we make up a good number of people in this community, so I think that that's a future consideration also. Sorry to take so much time, but my husband told me, when I got elected, he said, "Choose your battles," and I went home yesterday and I told him about the Sewer Authority meeting, and he said, "Liz, this is a battle, this is a battle worth fighting." So, I'm not trying to fight, I'm just trying to be civic-minded. Thank you for listening. Now, what do I have to do about the other thing I separated? Do I have to talk about that?
You got to do one at a time.
One at a time.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to speak to the credentials of Mr. Shawn Walsh. I just happen to know Shawn, he's a young professional in town in his twenties, he might have just turned 30, and works for Zern Industries, committed to living in the city, his father is Judge Walsh, and I think he is a, a good fit for the Sewer Authority. I think that we need to encourage young people to get involved, and, and I just wanted to explain to the people, you know, we don't take turns in the sense of like, you get it, appointed to an authority, and it's yours forever, or it's yours till someone appoints you. It's just like the federal government, when you get elected, you put in your people. President Trump put in people that, and took out President Obama's people. As your term expires, as serving the city or serving the authority, the new council comes up, and we take turns appointing people. Otherwise, you would have people on these committees that Mario Bagnone appointed back in 1992, or whenever he got off of council, and so, we have to realize that that's not our rule, that's the rule of the Authorities Act from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and it's the prerogative of the council person to appoint who, who they want. If they want to put, for example, I did not originally appoint Mr. Wajaleski to the Water Authority, but I chose to keep him on, that was my choice, and that was, you know, that's the choice of the elected official. And I don't think it's really, I think it's kind of unfair to Mr. Winarsky to call him out, if you will, for choosing somebody different, because that is his choice.
Could you explain to me how, how his choice...
Mrs. President, would you please tell the new council person that one person only has the floor?
Okay.
That's Robert's rules, you should know that.
I just, you know, I think that that is his prerogative as the council, as the council person, just as when the new council people get their chance to pick somebody, that's their prerogative. And I think that in doing so, there, there's a method to the madness, it's that everybody eventually has a say in the process, and then everybody, therefore, is part of how this government works. And so, I honor Mr. Knatchek, I think he's done a great job, I know him personally, he was appointed by Councilman Brennan, and it's nothing against him personally, and I, I think it's unfortunate that it's, seems like it was gone to a personal level in that sense. Shawn's a great kid, a young person in this community, and I think he'll do a fine job. Thank you.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
When I first started on council, and my term on a school board, it was explained to me then that you will get your turn, and there is an order. When I started here on council, it wasn't always that way, we had members with two authority appointments. Mr. Murzky and I, as president, worked hard to equalize that. As a result, our current president, I gave her an appointment, which is, which was my prerogative, because I felt it was her turn, she had been her four years, Mrs. Arrington, you remember that, right? I gave her an appointment because it was her turn, she had been her long enough and earned it. Now, it's Mrs. Arrington, it's her, she is free to pick anyone she wants. When I started here, people would say, the same people are on the authority boards. So, over the years, we've had a term limit set on them, and just because somebody's there doesn't mean that's her seat forever. If you feel like there's somebody more qualified, that's your opinion, and as a council person, you can disagree with that opinion and vote it up or vote it down, but your opinion, when it's your turn, is your appointment. How you want to handle it is, is your business, and if you feel there's somebody out there more qualified, then that's your privilege. There's nothing clandestine about this, all anyone has to do is ask the city clerk, and we have devised the means and a, and a method where each council person will get their, will get their chance, and each council person will have one authority and not two or three, so there will be no old timers, people with vested interests, like Mr. Murzky said, who had all the appointments tied up. So, this is a fair system, but like any other system, you'll, it'll come when your turn comes. I had to wait until my third or fourth year before I had my first appointment, and I accepted that. And it's your privilege, nobody's questioning the mayor for who he picks, that's his privilege. You have, you have to work with the people, and if you feel there's someone out there that's qualified, and I've had people come up to me, many of you are sitting out there now, and I told you that when, when a position comes up, if I feel that you're qualified, after talking to you and after listening to how you, how you deal with, with issues concerning the appointment, how it would be, I'll be glad to appoint you. But to pick on one council person and say that, you know, something's going on, no, that's not true. That appointment has been vacant for a while, and a lot of times, when you go out there and vet people, you don't get, you'll get people to turn you down that says, you know, "Thank you, but I just can't do it." So, the process is there, there's an order, Mrs. Roby will be glad to show you the list, and you'll, there's a list of when the appointments are up, and everything, to me, I see no problem. Thank you.
Now, am I allowed to respond? That appointment has not, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. President, can I respond to the, or ask a question?
Well, just a second, is there anybody else that want to respond?
I'll respond when everybody's finished.
Okay.
Okay. I did go in and ask what the process was, and there actually is a kind of random list of, of who appointed in, in 2017. Just so everybody knows, Mr. Knatchek was at the Sewer Authority meeting yesterday, his term expired, I think, at the end of December, so it was not vacant. If anybody would like my spreadsheet, you can also look on there and see that there are some people whose appointments expired a couple of years ago, who have not been replaced. I think there's one that dates to 2014. This is not a criticism of Mr. Winarsky at all. This is not a criticism of Mr. Wunarsky at all. All I asked was, could we postpone this? Because Kathy and I are new, which we keep being told over and over again that we don't understand the rules. So I said, could we wait? You know, Bob talked about his qualifications. We have not seen, I'm sure the person is qualified. All the information we have is his name and that he lives on Pacific Avenue. And is Pacific Avenue in the city? I thought it might be in Mill Creek, but, okay. Okay, so he does live in Mill Creek. And by the way, sewer authority, you do not have to be a City of Erie resident. But we are replacing him, the person who is a City of Erie resident was a Mill Creek resident. But that doesn't mean that the person is not qualified. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I got his name and his address. And so I went on Google, LinkedIn, and got some information that yes, he is a young man, graduated from Penn State Barren, has science, and I think it was finance, and then has a master's degree as well. And had, there was a picture of him on LinkedIn. LinkedIn is a good resource to use for those of you who like to use the internet.
Madam President, can I just, I'm sorry, I just want to make one more comment. LinkedIn is great, although you get way too many notices every single day of people wanting to connect. I don't think that that's the way city council members, though, should have to be looking up people who are nominated to authorities. We shouldn't have to go to LinkedIn and do our own background search on somebody.
Madam President, thank you for all the comments. Council members, just want people to know, in my eight years since I've been on council, there have been numerous appointments and to, by my colleagues as well as myself. Do every one of us dissect or see exactly what their certain council person has nominated for any board position? No. We do take some trust in their time and their knowledge that they're putting somebody in a position or a board seat, no matter whether it be the Water Authority, whether it be the zoning board, but in this case, the sewer authority. But we got to trust that they do their due diligence, my fellow council people, as well as the people who are putting somebody in that position, as in this case, myself. When I choose an individual, pretty simple, how committed they're going to be to make these meetings, how committed they're going to be to be a part of this authority or this board, their integrity, their qualifications, as well as their trust. What people got to realize, when we appoint somebody to a board or an authority, our name's on it as the individual who's appointing them, council's names on it as we normally vote him into that position, as well as the City of Erie. So there is a big responsibility that goes along with it, not just picking somebody's name out of a hat and saying, can you please vote for him? Please, understand, Dave Brennan had a appointment, and Dave Brennan is not on council anymore, and the appointment expired at the end of December, at the end of last year. I had an opportunity for that appointment. Mr. Shawn Walsh, young gentleman, Zern Industries, a global company in water itself that gives him some qualifications, as well as degrees at Penn State. Young kid, we want our young kid, fresh face, to be part of the process. And I know him, and I thought he would be a very good fit for the sewer authority. That's why I put him up for appointment. Thank you.
Rose, a call for the vote?
Roll call. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzke, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Wunarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Errington. This resolution will adopt seven ayes to one nay. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the city solicitors authorized and directed to prepare an ordinance for the closing and vacating of an alley between West 21st and West 22nd Street, between Peach and Sass, at the request of Brian Hayer and Village of Luther Square and V.L. Holdings, with Planning Commission approval and forward to City Council for action accompanied by the requisite $300 filing fee. Discussion.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table this. And the reason I want to do that is I think that if we're giving up an alley, this might be an opportunity for us to do a trial run with a community benefit agreement with this company, Village at Luther Square. The area of 22nd Street, 21st Street, between Peach and Sass, that's a moderate to low moderate income area. And we might be able to work with them because the city's giving up property for their benefit. We might be able to work with them to either get some jobs or some type of service out of, out of that agreement. I don't know if anyone would second.
I'll second that.
If anyone else wants to talk?
I drove by there, and it was snowy. So I didn't get out of the car, and everything was covered with snow. But I was wondering why they probably had some people that they didn't want in that area, as far as maybe getting into trouble with drugs or what have you. And that way, they could have a more secure place there at the Village Square.
Any more discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm going to, even though my name's on there, I'm going to agree with Councilman I have a concern that, I did get a call from one of the residents who utilized that alley. Evidently, the back doors or side doors of some of the residents are there. And I'm not sure how that's going to affect them because they do use that alley. Sometimes they park there. And unfortunately, one of the ladies who worked third shift parked there the night before a major storm. And she couldn't get out for a week. And she felt that the city should have plowed it. And I checked on it, and we don't plow alleyways. We just don't, we don't have trucks small enough to plow it. And I explained that to her, and she wasn't irate or anything about that. But there are individuals who use that, go into their homes through their side doors. So I agree with Mr. Murzke. We need to table it and look into it further.
Call for the vote, Rose?
By Mr. Murzke, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski. Motion to table. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzke, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Wunarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Errington. And this resolution is tabled. Okay, by Ms. Allen and seconded by Mr. Wunarsky. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to sell an out-of-service Baum 714XE Altofold Friction Feed Folding Machine to Roseanne Barker of Northwestern PA Labor Federation, a nonprofit, who has offered 200 for the machine as is. The machine was replaced two years ago and has bad rollers and other issues which prevent its functioning. The same machine with a similar problem was sold at an 1116, 2016 auction on GovDeals for $200. Discussion.
I believe we moved it to 150. Second.
It's 150 instead of 200. 150.
All right.
It's a move to 150.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we can.
Okay, roll call then. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzke, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Wunarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Errington. Resolution will pass seven ayes, no nays. And by Mrs. Allen and seconded by Mr. Wunarsky. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement with Edward J. Betza Esquire of the Elderkin Law Firm, 150 East 8th Street, Erie, to serve as solicitor for the City of Erie at a unit price of $125 per hour. Time will be billed at quarterly increments and invoices will be sent monthly. There is no guarantee of hours. Discussion.
I think Mr. Murzke had something he wanted to say.
We're ready for your amendments.
Okay. So, did you read it?
I did read it.
Okay. So the first thing, are we just having a discussion on the thing? Or you want me to do my, the amendment?
Well, we're having discussion.
Okay.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
First for me, there's really three issues here. The first is, should a city the size of Erie have a part-time head solicitor running the office? Two, should this head solicitor be a salaried employee of the City of Erie or a contracted employee? And three, what's the best value for taxpayers? And looking at the contract, I wanted citizens to know that this is very unusual for a city the size of Erie, one of the top 200 cities in the country, to hire a part-time head solicitor on a contract basis. Because it's an unusual move, I wanted to make sure I did my research and that I fully understood what the implications of this is. So first, we directed our legislative assistant, Lori, to get research from other Pennsylvania cities over 50,000 people. So we spoke with Allentown, Redding, Scranton, York, Lancaster, Harrisburg, and other cities over 50,000 people across Pennsylvania. No other city in Pennsylvania over 60,000 people has a part-time head solicitor. None have a pay-by-the-hour contracted solicitor for their head solicitor. And almost all of them hire their full-time solicitor as a city employee. So to do what we're doing is really an extraordinary move without much precedent for a city our size. The second issue for me was, should the person be hired as a salary employee or an hourly contract worker? I spoke with Attorney Betza's other municipal clients. By far, Erie will be the largest municipality that Attorney Betza represents. Everyone spoke very highly of Attorney Betza. And so some of the other clients, though, were surprised that a city the size of Erie would consider taking a pay-by-the-hour approach to the head solicitor, as billable hours can add up quickly in a city with the volume of work that the City of Erie has. I also looked at Mill Creek Township, which contracts out their legal services. They bill, in their budget, $1 million for legal bills a year. The City of Erie, with a full-time staff of a head solicitor, full-time deputy, full-time paralegal, full-time secretary, and another full-time solicitor, has a budget 35% cheaper than Mill Creek Township. Ours is only 670,000, which is a savings of about $330,000. And we're twice the size of Mill Creek approximately. So the contract reads there's no guarantee of hours. But the inverse is also true. There's also no limit on billable hours as well. So we're told that, we anticipate about 20 hours a week. But we're also told that if something comes up, many lawyers in the firm could be employed under the contract to get something done. So we're dealing with a hypothetical situation where it may be less, but it might be more than 20 hours a week, depending on what circumstances arise, with no cap on the contract. Finally, I looked at what's the value for taxpayers. And when we break down the cost per hour with pension, benefits, salary, we budgeted $103,000 for our head solicitor for his salary. If you include pension and benefits, it's between 130,000 and 150,000. So I use 140 as a round figure there for about $85 an hour when you break it down to a $35 an hour fee. The contract's for $125 an hour. So the only way we save money on this is if we force the solicitor to work less hours. To put it another way, let's compare apples to apples and have both of them work a 35-hour work week. Before taxes, we budget, in our budget is $2,942. That includes the benefits and pensions for our salaried solicitor. Under this proposed contract, 35 hours would cost the city $4,375. In other words, what we budgeted for 35 hours of work will now only pay for 23 and 1/2 hours of work under the new contract. That's equivalent to a 35% pay increase. As Finance Chair, I was hoping the administration would explain to us how this is a better value for taxpayers. I want to do this in a spirit of cooperation, and I want to give it a try. But what I can't, I have a hard time doing is ignoring basic math, that $125 an hour is greater than $85 an hour. That's not saving money. And so as an elected official, I and the rest of council have an obligation to the taxpayers of the City of Erie to ensure that your tax dollars are being spent efficiently. You guys are investing in the city, and we must maximize every dollar that we spend of yours wisely. Research shows us that we need a full-time head solicitor for our city, for a city our size. It's prudent to have a salaried solicitor whose only client is the city so that we ensure that we stay within the budget. And when it comes to value for taxpayers, I think everybody knows that $125 an hour costs more than $85 an hour. Thank you.
There any more discussion?
I'd like to discuss something. A couple of things. I told Bob I appreciated all his homework that he's done on this. And he is the head of the Finance Committee, so I'm hoping that once we start our regular finance meetings, we will be looking at the billing every month from, from the city solicitor who would be hired under contract. I view this as an opportunity, not just to look at how the, you know, the mayor has presented it as a possible way to save money because you don't have the full-time benefits or the pension. But he's also told us that the person will actually look at how the city solicitor's office is currently staffed and whether improvements are needed. And I gather, from having attended city council meetings and also a lot of other meetings, that there's been a lot of frustration with the way the city solicitor's office had responded to council. Kathy and I were at a meeting yesterday where we heard the familiar phrase that something had gone to the city solicitor's office and had gone into a black hole and never came back to the Planning Commission. So it, just so that it's clear, I can't speak for the mayor, but the way he presented it to us, this is a way to actually look at how the office is staffed to see if there can be additional savings and efficiencies. And again, I created a spreadsheet based on the really good information that the city clerk's office did for us in looking, reaching out to other municipalities in Pennsylvania to find out how, how they did their staffing with, you know, a contract solicitor or a full-time solicitor, how many assistants. And I just found this really interesting, Bob mentioned Lancaster, and that Lancaster is one of the places that has a contracted city solicitor. This may have nothing to do with it, but I was going through the budget today, and I found out that Lancaster had a lot more revenue from pilot agreements, $2 million in revenue from pilot agreements, you know, worked out with nonprofits than Erie has. Again, I have no idea if that's based on the quality of who the city solicitor is. But I just thought that was an interesting fact. I think that, you know, the mayor came in and promised to make changes, to really look at systems, how government is functioning. So I'd like to give this a chance and a shot.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
Thank you. There's no doubt, and I told Councilman Murzke, he did an outstanding job in his research and took. and took a lot of time, but I believe that change is evident. If we don't make a change, if we don't try the changes, if we don't try the suggestions, then we in Erie will remain the same. We have to make an effort to make something happen. We have a tendency of waiting for Lancaster, "Oh, it was great in Lancaster. Oh, it worked in Allentown. We should try it." Well, let's do it. What we're doing, if it doesn't pass, what we are doing is simply making the mayor a slave. What do I mean? We're making him a slave. We're saying, "You promised to move the city forward. You promised to bring some change. You promised to do some new things that was never done." So what we do, we put him on a ship. We put him in the bowels of the ship. We handcuff him. We shackle him. And then we tell him, "You're the captain of the ship, so get us where we need to go." In that contract, in that agreement, it's key words. If it doesn't work, the administration could cancel the agreement at any point in time. He could sign it today, and two weeks from now, he said, "I don't think it's going to work," and he can change it. And vice versa. The law firm, the law, he can change it. The solicitor said, "Ah, this ain't for me. I want out." And he's out. The mayor and his financial department will give us a monthly expenditure. And if we are getting too close, if we're headed for an over-budget issue, we cut it. He cut it. So we need to give him the opportunity to do that. It's something new. We can't be afraid of all the changes that come. This is an opportunity. If it worked, great. If it don't work, we tried, let's cut it, we still have money in the budget, and we'll do something else. Thank you, Madam President.
Any more discussion?
Mr. President? Mrs. President? I'll get in trouble again, that's okay.
I forgive you, Kathy.
I was listening to Mr. Mersky and the rest of the council. And I've been around for a while, and as such, I've seen a lot of things. And I've seen a lot of ideas, and I've seen a lot of ways of doing things. This one came down too quick, I think. We were giving it to us last meeting, and we didn't have much time to really discuss it. Since that time, we've had some time to do a little research. Not a lot, but if this was a good idea, I think it should have been brought down to us earlier, and it should have been explained a little better. Without any safeguards or limits in the contract, it's too open-ended. It really is. I have seen open-ended contracts and agreements, and they're not good. It's good to have a point where you can say, you know, mandatory, you're going to look at it and decide then and there. As you look at it, it doesn't address, to a council member who, and all of you at one time or another are going to be questioning the legal staff for questions from time to time. And the question now will be, is that on the clock or not? Or can I ask one of the assistants? Or do I have to go to the solicitor who's on the clock? There's too much vagueness in that. As a councilperson, I should be able to go to that office, ask a question, and get an answer, and not worry about how much it's going to cost us. Under the system we have today, at $669,000 and a little bit over, we get questions, well, the delays I'll address later, but we get our questions answered without fear of the time clock running. When our solicitor, and he may have to go to Harrisburg from time to time, is that going to be under the clock? Well, it might be. And Mr. Carley and many of the other solicitors have had to go down there, and there's a good chance that some of the changes this past council talked about concerning the income tax and other things, we may have to go down and lobby Harrisburg. And it becomes, how much is that going to cost? With a part-timer, I think there's going to be a lot more delays. I really do. I think there's going to be confusion until it settles down, and I think for council members, there's going to be confusion who they're going to have to go to for questions. And the question about, in the letter from the administration that this will guarantee cooperation, we shouldn't have to have a guarantee. The solicitor works for us as well as he does for the mayor. That's by city ordinance and by third-class city code. Yes, he works for the mayor, but yes, he works for all of us and the citizens. That hasn't always been the case. As a person myself, was a victim of a solicitor that overstepped his bounds and forgot his duties. As for pilot amendments, yes, the solicitor is involved in that, but it's more the administration and the solicitor working together and bringing people to the table. I have seen part-timers at City Hall. We had a part-timer in the IT department under a previous mayor. That didn't work out too well. And we've had part-timers in various departments. We had a part-time traffic engineer. That didn't work out too well. We had too many questions, and they never were answered. But the big thing I look at is there's a question of conflict of interest, and that's important. We already know there's one conflict interest, and there may be a couple others. And if that's true about the whole firm that this gentleman works for, that could be a problem in many things the city deals with. So I'm not comfortable with a part-timer. I think if you want to hire him, and I think he's a very competent attorney, then I would be in favor of hiring him full-time. It'll be cheaper in the long run. I know it doesn't look it, doesn't feel like it, but as Mr. Mersky said, if Mill Creek, who is probably as big as Lancaster, is the exception to rule, you know, usually when you get above $50,000, $60,000, the super cities, the Bethelhams, the Scrantons, the Erie, and the Allentowns, not counting Pittsburgh or Philly, all have full-time staffs for a reason. You will find out there's enough work in the City of Erie that merits a full-timer, not a part-timer. I'm not comfortable with a part-timer. This is no reflection on the administration's ideas, nor am I trying to dampen them in any way. I look forward to cooperating with them. But on this issue, my experience tells me, and I've hired a lot of attorneys in my time for the pension plans and many others, that sometimes it just doesn't work to have a part-timer. And it's not cheaper, and it's not beneficial to the citizens or to this council, who will need questions answered. Thank you.
There anyone else for discussion?
Madam President.
I haven't checked. Okay. Go ahead.
Just one thing. If I have, as a councilman, if I have any questions, my first move legally will be upstairs to the assistants. I'm not going to call the solicitor. If he's up there, that's one thing, but if he's not there, I'm going to talk to the people who are up there. They'll get my answers if they have to go to the solicitor. That's what they have for. Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Go ahead.
I would just like to propose an amendment. I'd like to make an amendment respectfully requesting monthly reports to the council for itemized bills that, from the law firm, that can offer us a review, and then also a review of the contract by council at the mayor's mid-year budget report. The rationale would be that, we've all talked about it, that, you know, we think, let's give it a try. So if we want to give it a try, mid-year's a good time to do it. He has to give a budget report anyway. That's a good time to review it. And then those monthly billable hours, that way we can talk about those at the finance meeting. I don't know if I'll have a second.
I'll second that.
Kate Rose, call for the question.
Okay, a proposed amendment by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski. A proposed amendment respectfully requesting monthly reports to council, itemizes the billing for the Elderkin Law Firm, and a review of the contract by council at the mayor's mid-year budget report. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Kwiatowski? Mr. Mersky? Mrs. Schoff?
No.
Mr. Winarski? Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mrs. Arrington?
No.
Now, this proposed amendment fails to adopt four nays to three ayes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to propose another amendment, putting a limit of $103,000 on the contract, which is the amount that we have in the budget for our head solicitor.
I'll second that motion.
And the rationale is that that's all we have budgeted for in the budget. We're told that it will cost less than that, that this will be a cost-saving, so it shouldn't be a no-brainer that if we put the cap on, at least it ensures the taxpayers that we're being fiscally responsible.
Okay, motion by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski. A proposed amendment putting a limit of $103,000 on the contract, which is the amount budgeted for the salary of the solicitor. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Kwiatowski? Mr. Mersky? Mrs. Schoff?
I have a question.
Okay.
When Mr. Schumber presented this, he said that he was going to update us regularly, correct? So now Mr. Mersky's proposing that we only go to the amount that's budgeted in our budget. Is that correct?
At that point, then, the administration would have to come and either issue a new contract. It would be a safeguard or a stopgap measure for us to then say, "All right, where are we going to get the money from? Because we only budgeted this amount."
Okay. Because I'm new to this, I apologize. I just want to make sure I understand. If I vote no, and there's enough votes, then Mr. Betza will become the solicitor.
Well, he's going to become the solicitor anyway.
That's what I want. I apologize, but I'm voting for him.
Stop apologizing. You're learning.
I don't want it to take a longer time.
Take your time.
That's what...
No, this would not delay anything. All this would do is have, it would just keep us within the confines of the budget that we passed, well, you weren't on that, but when you were at the budget sessions. It just keeps us in the confines of the budget that we passed.
Okay. Because everything takes so much time in government, I'm finding out. So I just want, I don't want my vote to delay so that we don't have a head solicitor.
It won't. What it would allow us to do is, I mean, I don't anticipate it going over the budgeted amount. If it does, then we'll just come back and issue a new contract or transfer some money. But it gives a stopgap measure to us to say, "Okay, we hit a checkpoint now where this is all that we had. Now we have to borrow from somewhere else or transfer from somewhere else." And it allows council to stay within the confines of the budget.
Okay. Mayor?
If I could, I just wanted to mention, $103,000 is the budgeted salary for a full-time solicitor, but there's also salary and benefits which add up to closer to $150,000. I don't have a problem, but $103,000 isn't the right amount, I don't believe, for this motion.
We're in the middle of a vote, though, right now. It's a problem.
It's the amount amended.
So even though the mayor spoke, Madam President, am I allowed to ask a question then, even though I already voted?
We're voting.
We're in the middle of a vote.
Right, but Kathy asked a question. So I...
Go ahead, go ahead.
You can ask a question, but I'm personally already voted.
Okay, it wasn't actually a question. It was actually going to be that the budgeted amount of $103 is the salary, doesn't include the benefits. So that's, what I wanted to say is what the mayor said, but he wasn't allowed to say it, but I wanted to say it, even though I already voted, so, sorry.
All right. Back to Ms. Schoff.
Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon?
No. I have, we elected a mayor who I consider to be a financial wizard, and I have enough confidence that he's not going to go over the allocated amount in the budget. We're going to look at it every month. Every month, we're going to look at it. When it gets close, we're going to ask questions. And again, we can terminate it, we being the administration, can terminate that. Then if he needs more, he has to come back to council and request more and tell us why he needs more. And then we say yes or we say no. If we say no, then he has to go back to the solicitor and say, "Hey, they didn't give me any more money. It's over with." So I don't think we're going, we need a cap. I think the cap is there already.
Mrs. Arrington?
No.
All right, this motion fails to adopt four nays, three ayes. And that'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
I think everybody about talked that way.
Hey, Jimmy.
Don't we still have to vote on the solicitor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to vote on the final.
We have to vote on the main amendment yet.
Okay, I'm trying to...
I mean, the main motion, clearly.
We've got to vote on the contract. Okay.
Sorry we confusing you, Rose.
Oh, that's okay. It's a learning experience. Okay, roll call. Ms. Allen? Mr. Kwiatowski?
No.
Mr. Mersky?
No.
Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarski? Mr. Witherspoon? Mrs. Arrington? Okay, this resolution will adopt by ayes, five nays, two. Now we'll go to committee reports, Madam President.
Now, if I had to choose who did the less talking, that would be me. But we're going to start with Mr. Jim here.
All right. Once again, good evening, everyone. We did have Brenda Sandberg in our caucus room before the meeting tonight to give a very quick, very quick master plan for Erie's Bayfront that the Port Authority has put in place. We are going to, just because of time constraints, we are going to set up a study session in the near future here to get something a little more informative, as well as so the citizens of Erie can also come to the study session and hear the proposed plan down at the port there. Other than that, want to thank Sisters of Mercy once again, giving that donation to the City of Erie, something they do not have to do by law, but it's nice that they think of us and think of our firefighters and our policemen for the help they bring, and thank you for your donation to the City of Erie. Want to thank the mayor for coming out tonight. A little chilly out there, but thanks for joining us this evening. And Attorney Zach, thank you also. Good night.
Ms. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that you want to be so active, and already I have seen you at a few events that I have gone to, so it's wonderful that you are out with us. So it's wonderful that you are out with us in the community. I thank you for that. I also want to thank the people of Erie to grab my learning curve. As an educator, I know that we all learn at different paces, and right now, I consider myself brand-new, and this is something that I really take to heart and want to do my very best, and there is so much to learn, and it's going to take time. The ordinance book is quite thick, and I'm a people person, and I want to be out in the community as much as possible. And I had the most memorable Martin Luther King Day weekend that I have ever experienced in my life. The Martin Luther King Center in Erie did a wonderful presentation of awards on Saturday night, awarding community leaders and businesses like Serviery and climate changers and people. It was a wonderful experience. And then, on Martin Luther King Day, I went to the St. James AME Church, and their program was absolutely moving. I was very inspired by that and the walk. And then, at Martin Luther King Center, they put on a wonderful program as well. The dancers for that program were from the Erie Dance Theater at the Martin Luther King Center, and they were so very talented. And at the St. James AME, there was the Pamazuko Choir, again, very talented. We have such a talented community, and it really inspired me to be more active than ever. So I want to get this right, and when I am up here, I'm representing all of you. I understand that. And I apologize for some of the confusion, but it's just going to take me a while to transition and understand the laws, because I'm an ordinary citizen becoming a person that makes laws, and I've never done that before. So thank you again.
Thank you, Madam President. I haven't attended any of my liaisons yet. The meetings haven't lined up right yet, so by next meeting, I'll have my first report. I want to thank all the hard work of the people who don't often get the praise, and that's the refugees and snow people who worked hard during this past storm. As probably one of the few that members of Storm of '56, we didn't move back in '56. Nothing moved. Yet, we had more snow this time, and I can say that within 24 hours, people are trying to figure out how to get up to the mall or other places and complaining because the roads weren't down flat enough. But nobody had a problem getting around, maybe for a couple of hours here and there, but basically, I think they did a great job. We all got around with little disruption. How the guys found those white bags in the snowstorm to refuse people, I don't know. But the few complaints I got, they took care of them quickly, Mr. Mayor, and they did a nice job. Please pass it on to them. And to our police and firemen who work all the time, police, firemen and firewomen, so nobody gets mad at me again, but they did a great job under a lot of pressure and a lot of issues, including the weather. I'd like to thank an unheralded group. I wish I could have honored them, and I'm going to try to find out if I can get somebody here, but Team Rubicon, some of my fellow veterans, who not only walked a walk, but talked a talk. And they did it once again, and they did it without any praise or adulation. They continue to serve the country as they once did, and I'm proud to be one of them. I'm not, I wasn't Team Rubicon, but I'm proud that my veterans came through. And I'd like to thank Brenda at the Port Authority meeting that she had recently, when she talked about some of the developments. I know there's a lot of fear out in the public about what we're going to do at the waterfront, but bear in mind that it's the last piece of important real estate in the city, that we can market and still be able to get some taxes out of and provide some entertainment and some things to do for the public. We all like to point out other cities, and we've all been there. We've been, some of us have been to San Diego, some of us have seen Navy Pier, others have seen other cities on the waterfront, and yet, we always ask why Erie's lagging. And sometimes, we're our own worst enemy. We worry about what kind of buildings are going up, what's going to go there. Well, you know, we've got plenty of time to plan for it and do the right thing for Erie. But at the end of the day, if you like what you saw at the waterfront 30 years ago, be my guest, because it's not the same place today. It's a place where you can drive through, stop through, walk around, have a good time. You wouldn't have been able to do that. You wouldn't even been able to think about a concert 30, 40 years ago, because you had pipes laying around and overgrown fields. So fear not change all the time. It will be coming, and it'll be for the good of the city. And rest assured, council will watch. But I want to thank everybody, and once again, everybody that did a lot of hard work over our past storm, and that's my report, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Cass. Mr. Mail?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. No committee reports, but three, let's say about two, two and a half comments, and two of them is directed to Councilwoman Kathy. You say that you're just an ordinary citizen. Remain an ordinary citizen, because you're up here, you're ordinary, we're ordinary. We just sit here, and we have another job to do. You're ordinary, stay that way. That's why you got elected. Also, no more sorry, no more apologizing. You do what you do best, you'll learn. You can look at all the books you want. You're going to learn just by being who you are and what you're doing. Things are going to come to you, people are going to call you. Then you got to call them, then you learn. Bob will give a report, something that you didn't know, so you learn. Jim, he may give you something that you might learn. All right? So you have to sift that out, you know, like Grandma used to sift the flowers. Yeah, that's what you had to do with him. But anybody else is okay.
Can I get another?
No. But you're doing a fine job. Don't you dare knock yourself. Don't you dare do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Ms. Liz?
Well, I already talked about the Sewer Authority, but Cass talking about snow reminds me that the chairman of the Sewer Authority, who lives a block away from me, I heard him talking about problems with, you know, cars being parked on the street. And by the way, Cass, I emailed you to see if you wanted to go around together to look at up in your neighborhood where you talked about problems with Mercyhurst. I don't know if you got that email. Did you get it?
I don't read emails too often. I'm not a social media person, but a phone call works a lot better with me.
Learn something new every day, every hour, every minute, anyhow. I do think that we need to look at, even though this isn't related to the Sewer Authority, the guy at the Sewer Authority was talking about, you know, cars being parked on the streets. So I would like to see if we could look at that for the future of, you know, whether we need a new ordinance or odd even parking that doesn't just end on, you know, that doesn't just end for the weekend. I'm also on the Zoo Authority, and this is kind of interesting. They don't, haven't published when their meetings are, but I believe the first meeting is going to be in February. I think they meet quarterly, and I'm the liaison to the neighborhood watchers, and Kathy and I both went to Snoop's the other day. So we went to a city planning meeting. We've been, we're kind of a duo hitting things when we can. That's it.
Mr. Ba.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Just a few things to report. The Management Center Authority meets tomorrow, so I will have a report at the next meeting. I, too, along with some of my colleagues on council, attended the Martin Luther King Dinner, and the mayor was there as well, and also the Martin Luther King March. And it was a good time to, in light of everything that's going on in the world, to have a sense of unity and a sense of camaraderie, and it was, and we congratulate all of the award winners at the King Dinner for their commitment not only to our city, but also to equality. I want to thank also the Sisters of Mercy for their generous contribution of $15,000, used for public safety. You know, the sisters, they're dwindling in number, but they, all the sisters in our community, they continue to give back, and we are so grateful for them, for that. And also, I just wanted to let people know, and Rose, I don't know what happened, I had a resolution for a land bank. We have our land bank already established at the city, and the county received a million dollars under the legislation from the state legislature, and unfortunately, they don't have a land bank set up, and under the rules, you know, it's going to take at least six months to a year for them to establish a land bank. And so, because you have to take it to Harrisburg, it has to be processed, they have to approve it and then bring it back, we're ready to go. So what I want to do, and I talked to most of the members of council, is I want to respectfully request a percentage of that money that's just sitting there, and we have so many needs in the city, and we have the mechanism ready to go. So give us the money and let us go to town with our land bank, and let us acquire these properties and put them back into use and get this city going. It's overdue. It's, I think it's foolish for us to sit and wait for the county for another year to do something. We're going to waste a whole summer when we could renovate and acquire and rehab and put it back in and put people to work. These are good things. So I want to work with Mrs. Dahl Kemper, and I think the money actually goes to the County Redevelopment Authority, so Mr. Novotny, and see if they would use some of that money as pass-through for our land bank. I was talking to TJ Sandell and Chris Groner from our land bank, and they're ready to rock and roll, they just need some money. So we want to try to get that to them as soon as possible, and that's all I have to report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. First off, I would like to say thank you to the mayor. And when citizens to be heard were speaking, I heard a number of people voice their opinion about the mayor not being at the meeting last night, and even some of our council members. You all have to understand that we have families, we have other obligations, and I know the mayor's schedule, probably like mine, done two months in advance, you know? So we can't be at every meeting, you know, because I always ask council, it's always, we always see who can go. So when one of us show up, we all there, because whatever we heard, believe me, we're going to discuss with our fellow councilmen and women, you know? So, and we also have to think that we already have changed right here. How many times did Mayor Senet come sit down to a council meeting besides budget time? So this has changed right here, and I think we ought to give him an applause, because you know, he taking the time out to come sit and listen to all your concerns. And as far as the viaduct, hey, I'm with all of you. It's a public safety issue. You know, I will talk to the mayor to see if we can do a public hearing. I don't know if he will, but I will ask that. But I'm all for saving the viaduct myself, and I, and Mayor, I do think there's a lot of things that you probably want to hear, you know? It may sway you one way or the other, but you know, our citizens is asking for a public hearing, so if we can give them that, I hope we can. I can assure you, it won't be five minutes a person. We probably do three, because I'm sure we're going to have a line out the door, you know? But I hear you, and I agree with all of you. You know, it's a public safety issue about our children, about the east side disconnecting from the west side. You know, I've been born and raised over here on the east side. I walked that bridge when I was in high school. So there's a lot of things going on, and then another thing that I want you to understand, it was a lot of debate going on up here with us, but that's a good thing. You know, we have to be able to agree and then disagree with each other. At the end of the day, we still colleagues, we still love each other. I know I love y'all, you know, even though I'm here a lot longer than I want to be, but it's healthy for us to do that. We're not always going to agree with each other, but at the end of the day, we still friends, and we can still move forward to our next agenda. So next, Ms. Teresa, you have a report? Mayor, you want to say anything?
I would just like to say a couple of things. I won't be long, but one thing is, I want to say publicly what I've already said to everyone on council, that I'm committed to being accessible and available to you, and I'm going to be open and honest, and if I make a mistake, I'm going to admit it. I want to work with you for the good of our residents. That's what this is all about, and we may not always agree, and that's okay. Like you said, I think that's actually a good thing, to have different points of view. There's nothing wrong with that. So I do appreciate you passing the fee agreement with the solicitor today. Something I'd like to say about that, if I find my notes here, I have. I really believe that we need change in order to, you know, to transform the city, which I think we have a real opportunity to do that right now, and this, in my mind, is part of that change. I could be totally wrong. If I am, I'm going to admit it at some point, but going through a process of trying to decide on the solicitor, I'd never even thought of having a fee agreement with the solicitor. I was looking to hire someone full-time. And then, over the course of the conversation with several attorneys who I was considering, this topic came up from several of them, and it seems like a good thing, and I became convinced that it would be a positive change if we do it, and that we could produce better results at a lower cost by doing it this way. Now, we're going to find out if it works or not, and I am committed to giving you monthly reports. I plan to be at all the evening meetings. Renee Lamas will be coming to the afternoon meetings that you have, or the morning meetings, I mean. I will be at the evening meetings, just to listen, to participate, to, you know, to be available. I also want to say to the folks still here, when I was on city council, by this time in the meeting, everyone was gone. I'm very happy to see so many people have stuck around for the entire meeting and heard that. I also wanted to say, I was really pleased a couple of weekends ago to be at the Steve Eric de Junior Candlelight Vigil and Talent Show that Sonya put on over the Booker T. Washington Center. The talent of those kids was amazing, really amazing, and, you know, Liz and Kathy were at that also, and it was an honor to be there, and Sonya, thank you for doing that. I think that was the eighth annual. I hope it continues for many years to come. I also wanted to mention, I've been being trained as a boxer. I've had four lessons so far, because I'm going to participate in the Knockout Homelessness event on February 20th. I'll be boxing Lou Bizzaro. All I said was be boxing, but I didn't say I was going to win. But he's an incredible guy. I've gotten to know, you know, we've got, we've become friends, gotten to know each other well. It's, yeah, I've never boxed before, but the incredible thing for me is physically, it's very rewarding. I never anticipated that, but even more than that, usually when I go there, it's, like tonight, I was there from 5:30 to 6, or from 5:00 to 6:00 for an hour session with him, and it's just, your mind, it's mentally rewarding to go through that, you just, you know, if you've had it. I didn't really have a tough day today, but it was just, it's just, I look forward to it now, the boxing lessons. We're doing it about every other day from now through February 20th, and hopefully, I'll at least be able to look like a decent boxer on February 20th. Also, the Martin Luther King Celebration was mentioned, and it was great, especially Pastor Dale Snyder's. He showed some clips of Dr. King speaking.